Looks like we're all set to start. I'll call this meeting in order. It is 6:32. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone this evening. I'll now turn things over to the superintendent for our celebration of excellence.
Thank you so much. I just want to make the board aware that we had an error on the agenda and we will be celebrating K-5 STEAM next month from BCS. But tonight, we have some exciting news from Bolton High School. Bolton High School is proud to announce that the following students have been awarded the status of commended student by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Commended students are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise, demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the PSAT. Gianpaolo Girosoli, Tomas Hinckley, and Roy Cianes all scored in the top 3% of national participants. Congratulations to all three of you on your tremendous hard work and outstanding accomplishment. We give them a round of applause. That would be awesome. And last but certainly not least, in addition to these three students, Julia Zimmerman scored within the top 1% nationwide. As a semifinalist, Julia has the opportunity to continue in the competition for over 7,250 National Merit Scholarships to be offered next spring. Congratulations, Julia. Amazing accomplishment. Well done. Bolton High School offers the PSAT to all students in grades nine to 11. I don't know if any of our honorees this evening would like to say anything about their tremendous accomplishment, and you don't have to, but I'm putting it out there if you'd like to. I'm seeing shaking of heads, so I'm going to go with no, but congratulations to all four of you. That's outstanding. Well done. And that concludes our celebration of excellence for this evening.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And to move on to comments from the audience, is there anyone who would like to make a comment about anything this evening? Hearing nothing. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Onto routine business. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2022 Board of Education Business Meeting.
Sue, move. This is Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Got a second?
I'll second that, Diana. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Diana. Any questions, comments? Edits? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I think that was everybody. There's no one opposed or abstaining. Onto Board of Ed Committee Reports. Curriculum.
Is Sue here?
Sue is not able to look.
Okay. I guess I can report that curriculum met last week. And we talked in Japs about the new change to reading curriculum that the state, in its wisdom, passed in last year's, it's the last year or the year before. But anyways, we talked about the fact that the state is requiring school districts to adopt one of five textbooks that were programs that the state has approved for use in K through three and the various difficulties this presents, not just for Bolton, but for many school districts. And that was, that took up most of the conversation. Did I miss anything, Monica?
Nope. Just a little bit of an update and a recap that picked up where your main meeting left off and we just wanted to kind of review some of that before we dug into something a little bit deeper.
Thank you.
And I'll be talking a little bit further this evening about the K-3 reading requirements that Chris spoke about, so that there is more detail for all board members. So thank you for that update, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Onto Finance.
Hello. We met today, actually, and they were 13% expended as we were last year, so it's just the same as last year. And of course, special education is an ever-changing landscape, and I'll turn it over to Kristen for all the details.
Thank you. I'm going to just wait for it to come up on the screen. I know Mr. Mazzelli is working on that. I can see him. Okay, if we could go all the, yep, thank you, Joe. So for, we only had three transfers in September. The first was a reclassification to cover Music Site Reading Factory. The next was a reclassification to purchase additional instructional supplies at BCS. And the last one was to purchase additional iReady math books for, we didn't have enough books because we had some students move into districts, so we needed some more in a particular grade level. Any questions about the transfers? Okay, hearing none. If we could just scroll down a little bit, Joe, if I could just kind of show everybody where we're at. At this point, we've expended regular instruction by 39%. And right now, you know, we're projecting full expenditure. It's a little too early in the year to not do that. And then in Student Support Services, we are 16% expended. There are changes afoot. Stay tuned, as Rhea said. We're 23% expended in Administration Support and Central Services. 14% in Operations, 12% in Salaries, Wages and Benefits, and as Rhea shared, 13% overall. So we will need a motion, please, to approve the September transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers.
I'm sorry, who was the second? I had Rhea as the first. Who was the second, please?
I was.
Thank you, Ben. Sorry.
Thank you, Rhea. And Ben, is there any questions or comments about the transfers this month? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Passes. Onto Personnel. The Personnel Committee has met twice since our last meeting, both times to discuss the pay rate of substitute teachers and also the item that we'll be discussing in the executive session. Now, onto BHS Student Representative Report.
Michael, that's you, sir.
Can, I can't see myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can't see you, but we can hear you. So go ahead.
Okay, I guess let's do it without care. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So my partner Erin was not able to make it tonight due to class. But all of the junior sophomores and freshmen had a long morning of PSATs and SATs. Seniors have also been very busy flying to colleges. Last week, there was the College Fair and representatives from close to 50 colleges were present. Last Friday, the Senior Sunrise was held, where seniors came early to school and watched the sunrise around 6:50 and quite a few seniors showed up, and that was nice. Cross Country has been doing very well, coming third in the Invitational, and the girls' soccer team has also been very successful in their games. And they actually had a game today. I believe they won. This weekend will be a busy one with homecoming this Saturday and the Powderpuff Football Game this Sunday.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Community Meeting Reports. Do we have anyone who went to any community meetings that need reported on? I am not hearing any or aware of any, so we will, I'll now turn things over to the superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools Report.
Great. Thank you very much. So we're going to start this evening with a food service update. So I would like to share with the board that for the 21-22 school year, our projected revenue for food services was $270,000 and our actual revenue came in at $328,709. And we received $58,709 more than projected. I just want to remind the board that I think a lot of that, I know a lot, had, that had to do with, last year, we operated under the federal USDA Seamless Summer Option called SSO, which ended on June 30th of 2022. The program, the board may remember, provided free breakfast and lunch for all students 18 of years of age and younger. Our projected expenditures for 21-22, if we go to the next slide, please, thank you, were $248,550 and our actual expenditures were $284,236. And I will just offer, anybody who's gone to the grocery store last year knew that as the year went on, the cost of everything continued to rise. We did expend $35,686 more than projected. Through the USDA Seamless Summer Option, we served 63,870 lunches and 10,204 breakfasts. So I want to say thank you to our very hardworking staff in both of our cafeterias. They are very dedicated and do an awesome job. We had a beginning fund balance of $47,078 as of July 1st or June 30th of 2021. And we had a surplus last year of $44,743 with an ending fund balance as of June 30th, 2022 of $91,550. I just want to remind the board that every year, this summer fluctuates up and down. And just prior to the pandemic, our program is a self-funded program. And we were getting to the point where I had raised some concerns with the board that in a few years, I thought it may be possible that we were going to have to be assuming some budgetary components of the program. COVID hit. There was a lot of federal money that came in through the USDA for, for food programs. So that definitely did help us. The USDA, in addition, has provided a supply chain assistance grant to districts. And in May, Bolton received $18,202.61 in relief funding for supply chain disruptions. The funds have to be used by September 30th of 2023. So we will be using that to purchase the various things that we need for the program. This year, Bolton opted into school meals assistance revenue for transition or smart funds, and we will receive $77,204.50 to continue to provide free meals to all students until the funds run out. We anticipate at this point that those funds are likely going to take us to the end of this calendar year. And upon return from winter break, we will be back to paying for meals whether you're on free, reduced, or full pay to opt into meals. For 22-23, the projected revenue is $267,117 and our projected expenses are $308,572 with a projected deficit of $41,455 and a projected ending fund balance of $50,095. Again, I want to remind the board, this is a self-funded program and in fact require board funds in the near future, as I have shared in previous years. Any questions about our food service program that I can answer? All right, hearing none. I am going to move on and turn it over to Mr. Giard for a BCS update.
Good evening. BCS had two very well-attended open houses during the month of September. On September 20th, we welcomed our sixth through eighth families. And on September 22nd, we welcomed our pre-K through five families into the building. Everyone was, was very excited to be back in person, and for many families, this was their first time ever being in the building. Families were able to meet the staff, visit classrooms, and interact with other families. The positive energy and excitement throughout the building on both evenings was contagious. A week later, on September 29th, we welcomed our seventh and eighth grade families back into the building for our BCS Washington DC trip parent meeting. We had about 40 families attend in person and another 30 attend over Zoom. We're excited to be heading back to DC after a few years off for our DC and 23 trip, so very excited. A big shout out and thank you, a big shout out and thank you, it is in order for the PTA and the BCS staff. The PTA continues to be extremely supportive of the BCS staff and students. The PTA meeting last week was very well-attended, and it was awesome to see so many new families in the younger grades getting involved. The support of the PTA allows us to enhance many programs and provide enrichment opportunities that we may not be able to do otherwise. My second shout out goes, and thank you, goes to the BCS staff for their continued hard work and dedication to the students. You'll hear a little bit more about it this evening when I talk about the school plans that are happening at both buildings. A lot of this work happens on early release and full PD days, so just a quick thank you as well to the board. We've always supported these early release and full PD days here. I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Fezic for a PBIS update.
Hello, everyone. So the PBIS committee at BCS.
For a minute. Number eight.
Mrs. Peterson, could you please mute your microphone?
So the PBIS committee at BCS meets the first Tuesday of every month. The past two meetings, we have had many members attend and representation from different grade levels and different departments, which has been really great. At the most recent PBIS meeting, which was last Tuesday, we planned out our staff awards. So we nominated four staff members for four different award categories. Shoot for the Stars, which is those who go above and beyond. Helping Hand, those who help others willingly. Thumbs Up, so those who have done a great job at something particular. And Smiley, those who are always smiling and just bringing really positive energy to the building. So those staff members that were nominated will keep their trophy for a month and then pass it on to a staff member of their choosing for the next month. And then they will get to write a little blurb on why they chose the next recipient. And then Mr. Giard will send out the blurbs each month on his Bulldog Bulletin so that all staff members can see who gets awarded and why. And we're also planning our first Fun Spirit Week at BCS for the week of October 31st. So we're calling it our Fall Spirit Week. So Monday will be Fall Color Day of that week, Tuesday Pajama Day, Wednesday Bolton Blue, Thursday Tie-Dye, and Friday will be the very exciting, kids can wear anything but a backpack to school. So between the Staff Awards and our Spirit Week, we're really just continuously coming up with ways to carry on with our already extremely positive and flourishing school climate, which has been great.
Great. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mazzelli for a Bolton High School update.
Thanks very much. Tonight's theme for Bolton High School is really about celebrating the return of some of the normal activities. As Michael mentioned, we did have a super-successful open house last month. We reimagined the entire format of the night to be more flexible for family schedules. And the addition of an ice cream social made it more family-friendly. The turnout was huge, and I'm still receiving positive comments from family and staff on that event. Michael also mentioned the, the return of the College Fair. That is coordinated with two other towns, something we've done for many years, but obviously not recently. The guidance team did a great job organizing that entire morning, and some of the college representatives I spoke with were very, very complimentary, not only on the fair organization, but especially expressed how prepared our students were, and that was great to hear. We're also, you know, bringing back music concerts, guest speakers, in-person parent meetings. And we think families will be as excited as the faculty is for that. There's also those other pre-pandemic activities that Roy mentioned. We're really looking forward to Homecoming Weekend and everything that that brings. But I'd also like to mention something that is brand-new and very exciting for Bolton High Schools and indeed, I believe, for all high school, in, all high schools in Connecticut. Yesterday, our grade 11, 12 counselor Todd Gin-Santi and I attended a webinar about a new program designed to provide automatic admission to several state and private colleges. Given the guidelines provided by the state, I did some early morning calculations, and it appears that over 80% of the BHS class of 2023 will be directly admitted to one or more four-year schools with very minimal paperwork. We're rolling out those details to students and families starting tomorrow.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Sure. Hi, good evening, everybody. I'd like to first start with our Start With Hello initiative. This took place in September. Morning announcements challenged students to reach out to long-lost friends, write affirmations, and show gratitude. Students demonstrated, demonstrated their commitment by wearing green and yellow, which is, with other colors of the initiative, and they also took part in different activities throughout the week. A culminating Ice Cream Sunday Bar awaited students during their regularly scheduled lunch period on Friday, September 23rd. Our PBIS team hit the floor running this year. We were happy to welcome a few new members to the team and thrilled that we had some past members rejoin our team. Our team will focus on promoting a positive school culture for both students and staff. For our staff, we have planned lunch gatherings. In fact, we had one last week, our first chili cook-off. We are also hosting a soup and cookie swap in December. We're recognizing our staff on their birthdays and will include faculty kudos during all staff meetings. For our students, our Bulldog Brigade Bulletin Board is back up, and we recognize students who have had a great start to the school year. In the coming months, students who have excelled with community service will be acknowledged as well as those who are positive school models for their peers. And lastly, our First Connections took place on September 21st. Connections is scheduled once a quarter, and it's basically an activity period where teachers pick something that they have an interest in or perhaps a hobby, and they share that with students. Students can basically select what they're interested in and replace them in one of their top choices. The nice part about the activity period is its multi-grade level, and students get to cross paths with those who they might not normally cross paths with during our school day. A great time was had by law. So that's what's happening in Bolton, at our high school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now, I'd like to introduce some more members of the Bolton High School faculty. And here they are. The group that we call Team 26, representing the, the instructors for the freshman class, which would be the graduating class of Team 26, and I will turn this over to them.
Okay, hello, everyone. So before we start, Joe, can you just go back to the last one? So we just have a couple new members that would like to introduce themselves. Emily, you want to start?
Sure. Hi, I'm Emily Bradley. I am the ninth grade math teacher. I'm excited to join Team 26 for this year.
I'll go next. I'm Alan Heffron. I'm the ninth grade world history teacher. I'm also thrilled to be joining the Bolton High School team.
I'm Frank Miniscalco. I'm the ninth grade academic support teacher and co-taught English teacher with Mrs. Lynch.
Okay, and then Missy Hobel and myself, we're still here. So first, we just want to talk about orientation.
Actually, Carrie, could you just, could you just share what, what you guys teach, please?
Yeah, of course. I'm sorry. Carrie Lynch, I teach English, grade nine English. And Missy, you here? Missy teaches science.
Thank you.
Next slide, Joe. Okay, so we started with orientation again this year, similar to last year. We had very high attendance. I think there were only a couple students that were missing. A few had vacations that they had planned, but they had notified us of that. We had something different this year, where we had the parents do a meet and greet at the beginning with the teachers. And we were very impressed with the number of parents that showed up. It was kind of, more than we had anticipated. So Joe and Christine took them on a tour of the building, and it was just, it was really nice to see them all. The students met with their bigs, and very similar to last year, they toured the building. They met the Team 26 teachers. They received their Chromebooks. This year, the bigs organized yard games for them at the end. We had a barbecue. And up in the corner there, we have a little bit of feedback from the students. So we had done a Google Form just to get some feedback on what they felt about the orientation. And some takeaways were that they just felt more comfortable coming to the building after having the opportunity to have the orientation. And I just want to have a huge shout out to our bigs and little programs, especially Juliana Rose and Liliana Potter for their organization, because they were beyond amazing. They organized everything. It went very smoothly. Missy here?
I think, I don't see Missy, so.
That's okay. That's all right. I'll, I'll keep going. So similar to last year, we just, we're running it the same way, where we have shared study halls. We found that that was super helpful in order to give the students extra support. You know, we could pull students, I pulled students from Alan's room, he pulled students from Missy's room to make up tests, get extra help on assignments. So that was one of the big takeaways that we had last year. We continue to have team meetings once a week where we all get together and collaborate. We talk about student needs. We talk about organizing lessons for them with McGee in the library. We teach, we tweaked a couple of our classroom procedures to make them more effective. But we, at the end of the year, we, you know, we did some reflection and did a little bit of tweaking, but for the most part, we found it was a really successful program last year for the students.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for, by board members, for the team? I just want to commend the team for a job very well done to help our ninth graders transition to high school. Great job. Well done. So now, I believe, Mr. Mazzelli, we are on to our school improvement plans, and it is my pleasure to introduce the board to some of our academic leaders. Kelly Bear from Center School, Colin Dennis from the high school, Chris Jones from the high school, and Alicia Rose from Center School, and they're going to share more information about the school plans.
Awesome. Thank you, Kristen. Can you just back up one slide, please, Joe? So as Kristen mentioned, we're going to be presenting the school improvement plan, and I was going to, just going to do some brief introductions. Alicia Rose is Math Curriculum Leader at Bolton Center School. Kelly Bear is the Instructional Coach and an Instructional Leader at BCS. Colin Dennis, English Teacher and Instructional Leader at Bolton High School. And myself, Chris Jones, Family Consumer Science Teacher and Instructional Leader at the high school. And I'm going to pass it on to my colleague, Alicia.
Good evening, everyone. Just to give a brief overview about the plans and how they came into play. So each school has a plan directly that's tied to our Bolton Public School Strategic Plan. And over the summer, the academic leaders and administrators came together and determined we really had a need for this plan, not only to move some of our work forward now that we can finally get back to the business of being normal and teaching and learning instead of reacting to the pandemic and crisis mode. We are really excited to streamline a lot of that work underneath the overarching umbrellas of these plans. We had kickoffs on the opening days of school PD, and we presented them to the staff. And everyone was very gracious, I think, and excited at the streamlined plans and the ability to move through these goals to improve our teaching and learning. They are multi-year goals. It's a work in progress. And we decided to focus just on three overarching major goals. So in the next slide, you can see that we came up with this graphic to kind of show how the three big ideas behind each goal, our community environment and clarity. And altogether, those three goals are connected and tie into the support of our ultimate goal, which is our portrait of the graduate and our students' success. I'm passing it on to Colin, I believe.
Yes, perfect. Good evening, everybody. So our first.
So our first goal is actually a shared goal with BHS and BCS. We have the same language, and this is this idea of a school and family, a goal for school and family and community partnership to try and, you know, develop school, home, and community connections by collaborating with multiple stakeholder, older groups to determine best practices. Really, we as a team, as a school, you know, BCS as well, are always looking for ways that we can build and maintain more positive relationships with families to allow families to understand what their child is learning and where they are with their learning and to help support them as best as possible. And the more ways that we can do that and the more opportunities we can create, the better off we all are. It's really going to help us sort of diversify our communication methods in order to maximize family engagement. And we've, we're already seeing it, you know, with, it's been touched on a couple of times how great Open House was, apparently of both buildings, how excited families are to be getting back to the sense of normal. So the more that we can build on those positive moments, the better off it's going to be for all of us. Our second goal is slightly different, so I'm going to introduce the BHS side for the environment goal, and I'll pass it off to Kelly for the BCS side. For our school environment, we want to create a positive and supportive learning environment that promotes high expectations for student achievement. Our portrait of the graduate has very high expectations, and all of us as faculty members at BHS are constantly, you know, holding our students to a very high standard. So our positive and meaningful relationships are the foundation to creating that great learning culture that allows them to take risks and allows them to challenge themselves and allows them to really reach for those high standards that we have. So creating that environment that allows for that and questions and letting them learn from their mistakes and feel physically, socially, and emotionally safe is really going to be key to earning student success across the board. As for, or BCS, I'll hand it over to Kelly now.
Good evening, everyone. So for BCS, BCS is working to nurture a productive learning culture that is founded on positive and meaningful relationships in order to improve student outcomes and achievement. And BCS wants to review and refine the physical environment, our routines and classroom behavioral expectations, along with the emotional environment, and the learning behaviors that support the Bolton Public Schools transferable skills and the portrait of a graduate. So again, we also want to make sure the students are feeling comfortable and safe and that they're ready to learn. Next slide. So the third goal for the district is teacher clarity, and the district is working to build habits of mind to systematically and efficiently analyze the standards, build curriculum, teach and assess learning. And Bolton Public Schools will build capacity as a staff to empower students through the clarity of organization, explanation, guided practice, and assessment of student learning. And it is important that we are all teaching our students with clarity because when students know what success looks like, they are more likely to plan and predict goals, set goals, and require a stronger sense of how to judge their own progress. So that one is a shared goal. All right, Chris, you're up.
You're muted, Chris.
All right, sorry about that. So like I was saying, the school plans guide all of the work that we're going to do this year, and we plan on, as was mentioned previously, it's a multi-year goal, so we plan on working in PLC, staff meetings, FORP Tuesdays, professional development days, and any chance that we get an opportunity, we plan on working on it. And while I'm thinking of it, I wanted to thank the board for allowing us, speaking of PD days, to have this time where both schools can continue this important work in terms of the school improvement plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much. Are there any questions from board members? Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I wonder if we could take a step back, though. I'm a little curious as to where all of this came from and how it relates to our strategic plan. It seems like in some ways it's kind of maybe remaking the strategic plan. I hope that's not the case.
It's not.
Okay, so could somebody maybe talk to why there was it felt to be the need to have these two school plans and, you know, when that process started and just a bit more background info?
Yep, so for I'm going to start, and then I'm going to let Joe, Daryl and Joe both chime in as well. So I, we had had some conversations last spring about, you know, how we were going to continue to drill down the strategic plan at each school. So we have these overarching goals, right, that we worked very hard to create and to put together. We're coming out of the pandemic. The two schools are in similar, but yet at times different places with a variety of different things because we're coming out of the pandemic, which, you know, we really didn't plan for as we were creating the strategic plan in nineteen, right? Right? So that's part of it. So I felt very strongly that it was important that both schools have a school plan that's tied directly to the strategic plan so that when we go to report out to the board in January, December, January, when we do, and May or June, when we do again, that instead of what we've done in the past is we keep this endless Google Doc where it's like a grain dump. Oh, this is everything we think we're doing under this. And I think we were all finding that it lacked some clarity and purpose for everyone. It was clear and purposeful to the administrators, but I would have to say I'm not a hundred percent certain it was clear and purposeful to our teachers and then by default for our students. And I see Colin nodding his head, so I think that that's accurate, what I just said, which is why I asked for the schools to develop these plans because I felt very strongly that there needed to be full buy-in by everybody. It can't just be Kristin and the board have a strategic plan that get, you know, that's imposed on everyone, if you will, and trying to find out where we connect the dots. So this was very purposeful in being clear. We have a strategic plan. We have our portrait of a graduate. We have now designed school-level plans that directly align to our POG and our strategic plan. Hopefully, that answered some of your question, and I'd like to turn it over to Daryl and then to Joe to add to that, if they wish to, and you don't have to.
That's a great question, Chris. So we had a school plan back in two thousand and nineteen, and then things kind of, so for nineteen twenty, and it was more structured by like content areas and the work we were doing in the school that way. And now coming, like Kristin said, on the tail end of the pandemic, we looked at student data, individual students. We wanted goals that were pre-K eight and actually pre-K twelve. They turned out to be relevant, so when we planned PD days and other learning opportunities, we have our go-to document. We pull up a staff meetings, PLCs, PD days, so it really does guide our work. And we, like I said, looked at the data over the summer with the academic leaders, and we spent the first day we were together was four hours, and it took like two or three hours just even remotely get to what we were thinking were the goals. So it was a lot of time spent drilling down to just figure out those three goals. So it's very meaningful. The whole staff bought in. The academic leaders presented it to them on the first day of school. So that kicked off our work for the year, and like I said, we're revisiting it at all the meetings to help guide our work.
So, you know, I would agree with everything Daryl said, and I would just add the piece that we've always developed over the summer, kind of like the plan for the year for this, you know, for learning for teachers and where to align, you know, where's it going to fit on a PD day versus, you know, professional development, a teacher wants to go, or all the different parts. The big difference here was the administrators laid out a thoughtful template on the front end, a template that helped us communicate with each other and obviously with you. And just that added piece of structure made the conversation at the center school more parallel to the conversation at the high school simply by the structures that were put in place. So although we've always had goals and we knew what we were working on, we are much more articulated between each other and across the district.
Thank you, Kristin, Joe, and Daryl, for, that was a lot of background information that was really helpful, at least for me. And Kristin, I really appreciate the, your comments about how the strategic plan can sometimes seem a little overwhelming and hard to figure out how it relates on a day-to-day basis for people who are, you know, not at the executive level. I think that's true of strategic plans in most institutions, and one of the reasons why they're not very successful. I mean, the CEO and those around them know the strategic plan, but no one else in the business does. So I'm really glad to hear that you've taken this initiative. I think it's a great idea, and I hope it's successful for both schools. It sounds like a good plan. It's underway.
Thank you. We probably should have led with that because, again, right, in our heads, we think it's all tied together, so thank you for the question. I really appreciate it. It was, it was a very thoughtful question. You know, I'd just like to remind the board, too, that our strategic plan goals, goal one is focused on student success. That's what this is all about. Goal two is focused on a caring culture. You heard that clearly articulated. The talent development, that's all about the PD that we're doing for all staff this year to help improve teaching and learning, and, and obviously the resource stewardship, you know, will come in as we are supporting the PD as part of all of this. So hopefully, that's helpful. Any other questions for our team? Great job, everybody. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to Connecticut approved pre-K to three reading. State of Connecticut calls it curricula slash programs. I will offer, I think it's more programmatic than anything else, but that's just my personal aside. We could go to the next slide, please. So Connecticut General Statute, Section ten dash fourteen II requires the Connecticut State Department of Education to review and approve at least five reading curricula slash programs based on the science of reading that must be implemented by all Connecticut school districts in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. CSDE released the approved list of six programs to districts on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, to be implemented for July first. CAPS, Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent Survey Districts, and twelve out of the hundred and twenty-two respondents, the superintendent being one of them, use one of the just-approved programs. So that is a very small number. Bolton currently uses foundations, which we had vetted a while back now, and we've used it for several years in the early elementary grades. Foundations is not one of the programs that is currently on the approved list. However, the science of reading research continues to inform our balanced literacy approach, which focuses on phonological awareness, phonics and word recognition, fluency, vocabulary, and oral language comprehension, as well as text comprehension. Districts are expected to complete a CSDE survey with their decision by December sixteenth, whether they will be implementing an approved program or submitting a waiver or requesting a one-year extension to implement an approved program in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We are not in a position in the next six weeks to make any type of informed decision about changing our K three or our K five reading programs. I also want to call to the board's attention that this mandate has significant budgetary implications. I'll speak to that more in a minute. We have begun to conduct a good-faith thorough examination of these approved programs. At this point, we are leaning towards requesting a waiver. However, in the initial information that came out from the State Department of Education, the waiver language basically created such a formula that unless you accepted one of these six programs, you were not going to get approved for a waiver. And there is a school district that had already applied for a waiver and was denied in another part of the state. There has been a lot of pushback by superintendents about how the waiver was structured because it really wasn't structured in such a way that districts could present what they're using in a meaningful way to show data and resources that they're using. And I, as such, we received word that the state is re-examining what constraints they are putting for the waiver process. So we are anxiously awaiting the specifics of those parameters. I received an email yesterday that indicated more information will be forthcoming shortly. I'll just add, it's the middle of October. So we are hoping, as I shared, to put forth a waiver, and we have begun the process of examining the programs, and we will provide a further update once we have more information. Questions for me, or for Monica, about this?
You mentioned you were going to explain the financial implications.
Oh, yes, sorry. So we had a meeting with one of the approved groups last week, and we received detailed information about a quote today, and we're looking at approximately seventy thousand dollars to implement for grades K three only in a total of ninety-six thousand dollars to implement grades K five. We haven't talked to the others yet. So who knows what that looks like? So stay tuned, I guess. You know, I think that there is, like I shared, a lot of pushback around the state, and I think once, hopefully, I'm hopeful that once the new legislature is seated and they understand the financial implications for their districts, that they may want to rethink this one-size-fits-all-for-all districts because I don't think, quite frankly, that that's the right approach.
What can we, as a board, do to help you? I mean, can, can we draft a letter to the State Board of Educat, not Board of Education, the State Department of Education? I mean.
And I think to the State Board of Education, too. I know that the State Board was meeting today about this to discuss some of these refined parameters that they're going to be coming out with. So I do think that over time, if we're not seeing some kind of relief, that I may be asking the board to draft a letter to send to both the State Board of Ed, to the Commissioner of Education, and to our state senator and state representative, once they're seated.
But for right now, you're comfortable with us kind of just monitoring the situation?
I am. I'm going to ask for just a hold right now just because we're still missing components from the state, so it's hard to say, you know, in the end, if we don't get a waiver, and then we have to potentially request a one-year extension for implementation the following year. You know, I've read the statute. It doesn't appear that there are, that I can find in statute any financial implications if we choose to do nothing and continue doing what we're doing. However, there has been some background information that has indicated that maybe the state could hold back Title I funding. I can't find anywhere where that's wholly accurate, but they could, and I don't think they need statute to do that. Any other questions about that?
Is there any type of data that we can provide that shows that the programs that we're using are successful so that we can have some, you know, data-based argument to say that other programs that we've selected are adequate for our needs?
So we're looking, we're starting to dive into the data right now, Ria, to your point. And the state just today came out with data points that they want And the state just today came out with data points that they want us to be looking at. You know, again, I want to point out, though, we've also been in a pandemic, right? So, you know, we have some periods of time where we're, we don't have data points because everybody was at home and we were teaching from a screen. So, you know, some of the things that they are asking for, we're not gonna be able to necessarily have all of that per se. And by the same token, I will offer, I I I'm always a glass half-full kind of person. So I think it's a good thing that we are examining our programs, right? And that we're talking to all of these other program providers to find out, maybe there is something at this point in time that's recently come out because several of the programs were released in twenty twenty. I I can assure you we weren't looking at new programs in twenty twenty. We were trying to figure out how to keep teaching at that point, right? So there may be some really good things that come out of it and maybe we find a program that's better than what we're doing. I don't know yet because we're too early on in the process. And the other question is, can we even afford to do it?
I've just seen the state come out with demands in, especially in reading instruction, that were not useful and actually I think detrimental to the development of children in the area of language arts. So I'm very weary of these kinds of decisions. I mean, it's a very limited number of programs
Correct.
to put to to demand on all the districts in the state.
Agreed. One hundred percent. Moving on to unfinished business.
Okay, that concludes your, I have a question. Why do they implement these things and then first and then figure them out later? No, you don't have to answer that.
Well, I actually I want to because the legislature imposed the law then created this piece that the C S D E had to put a group together to take a look at and then put it forward. You know, I think the legislature always, I think they're well-intentioned. I I think these are some significant unintended outcomes that are a result of their good intentions.
Road to somewhere is paved with good intentions. I don't recall where. Unfinished business, B O E meeting format. This is the topic that we discussed two months ago and then we said that we would discuss it again. This is in regards to whether or not we are meeting in person or by a virtual methods. Just checking in on other board members and seeing what their thoughts are on this topic. You may notice that I do not have trees in my background anymore. I had to start this meeting from Herrick Park because I had two girls and no other parent to transport them around and I was trying to arrange somebody to bring one home and I have one that's hopefully bringing the other home at eight o'clock, but I would have had to join the meeting late and other normal circumstances. And then we wouldn't have had a quorum. And then I don't know what happens when somebody's like, oh, I'll be there in twenty-five minutes and everybody's gathered. We have had all these teachers come in this evening. I suspect that they were delighted to not come back to work at six thirty P M. And, you know, if that helps have more presentations, have more teachers that show up and give us information, that's always a good thing. I'm sure that they're willing to come to the meeting in person anyway, but you know, it's certainly more convenient. So my, I guess, reason for saying this is that my current viewpoint hasn't necessarily changed. I don't know where COVID numbers are these days. I guess that's reflective of less, hopefully, but, you know, they're still talking about the vaccinations and, you know, I heard a winter wave. My first talk of winter waves you know, theoretically, who knows, but anywhere, I would like to have opinions from other board members. We can keep this on the, if we do wanna continue virtual, we can do the same thing and say we'll look at it again in, you know, December or whatever. Or we can discuss other options or maybe people have changed their mind in the last two months. So I will go ahead and start with that and whoever would like to opine on this, please feel free.
Well, I was actually in the same boat as Andrew tonight. I was daddy daycare while we kind of split our forces with the two girls. So I would have also been late to the meeting under normal circumstances if it were at the school. I don't really have strong feelings either way. I honestly understand that, you know, optically, it might look better if we were in person since the school is, you know, back to pretty much its normal routine, but this does provide, you know, really good flexibility to everybody, making it teachers and you know, parents that have joined the meetings and, you know, especially the board members. So I think that's where I would lean, but I don't have strong feelings either way. And if, you know, a consensus wanted to be back in person, I would definitely support that also.
I would not support going back in person until we have the ability to do a combined meeting where people who want to participate virtually can do so seamlessly and those who want to come in person, you know, that's, I think, the easier part of the component, but so I I I'm assuming that we still don't have the capability to to do that. So for the time being, I would prefer to stay virtual for all the reasons everyone else has mentioned.
I wouldn't be there. I wouldn't be in person because I have COVID. So I wouldn't be there tonight. So I'm glad that I was able to attend virtually and the numbers, I I look at the numbers quite frequently and they're, you know, they're hovering around ten percent. And that's still high and you know, we're all gonna start going inside now and I think we should maybe take another couple of months and check it out. But I also, I think Chris's idea of having the owl or some sort of hybrid so that people can attend virtually if they'd like to, I think it encourages more people to attend, maybe more parents and and even students. I do, I do wish that we could have celebrations of student excellence as as the weather gets better, maybe in person, because I I wish I could just be there and and see everybody for those wonderful occasions. But I I agree with Chris and I would like to see us stay at virtually at least for a couple more months, maybe through the holidays and then visit it, revisit it.
Diana, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I was about to say, um, I I think I could go either way. I like the hybrid model to give everyone ample, you know, opportunity to be present. But I similarly would not be there today if it was in person. Having a hard time to stay connected because of my two little guys at the same time that are sick, but I'm making it happen. So, um, yeah, I think the flexibility of having hybrid would be nice for those that want to attend, but I can go either way.
Okay, well, that sounds pretty clear that we're all still thinking that at least for the next couple of meetings will remain virtual. It does, I hope Ria is feeling okay. I do know a lot of people that have had COVID very recently or have it now or had it in the last three weeks or maybe suspected that they had it. So it's certainly still, that's still a thing and no, we're having enough trouble getting people to show up virtually this evening. So we'll look at it again in a couple of months. Thank you, everyone, for your opinion. We'll also continue to try and move forward because I think the hybrid thing will be the next step forward or I agree with Ria's thought about the celebration of excellence thing. Maybe we could you know, like the last time I had said, oh, maybe, oh, at some point we'd do every other meeting in person or we'll, we'll continue to think about it, but it sounds like for the next two months we'll remain virtual. So thank you, everyone, for that. Onto new business, resignations.
Okay, thank you. So we received resignations from B C S paraprofessional Kristen Victor and cafeteria worker Linda Turner. I want to thank them for their service and wish them well. Next item under new business is substitute teacher rate of pay. So, you know, I want to share with board members that other districts around us currently are paying between a hundred and ten and a hundred and fifty dollars a day. Our rate is around a hundred dollars a day. Minimum wage goes up to fifteen dollars an hour next year. So at our current rate, we're not even at minimum wage. Bolton, like other districts, is continuing to have issues securing substitute teachers. The Personnel Committee met. We discussed this matter and I don't know if if Andrew Ben or Chris want to speak to kind of where we landed.
Yeah, we we Kristen had presented us with some comparative information that was a list of surrounding districts. I don't remember, maybe there's twenty or some, a good size amount of numbers and we were you know, there might have been one that was lower than us or two, but it looked like everyone else was on average ten, fifteen or even more above that. But to get more into the middle of the pack, we needed to go from look, look at like basically another twenty dollars a day. We had discussed whether or not we would have differing rates for certified versus non-certified or whatever. But we have a number of long-term subs and they are paid as different in a different scale than this and to avoid complication, I think that we decided that maybe one twenty, which certainly did not put us at the top of those numbers, but it was comfortably in the middle, at least not, you know, when you look at a bunch of them, it's, you know, it's at least is not as much as the couple of towns around us or like within five dollars of them.
So I think the recommendation is to move it to a hundred and twenty dollars. So we would need a motion and a second so you can have further discussion.
I'll make a motion to increase substitute pay to a hundred and twenty dollars a day.
Thank you, Ria.
I'll second that, Diana.
Okay, is there any questions or comments or discussion on the substitute pay topic? I mean, it's pretty clear to everybody that labor shortage is not resolved itself and that substitutes and non-substitutes and every other job is having issues and it's questionable whether this will help, hopefully it helps something or it gets us that extra person or two that we need to keep the administrators out of the classroom, to keep our coaches and others who are doing their jobs instead of covering for people who are out. So, you know, this is something, it brings us into the middle and anyone else?
I would just like to add that it would go into effect if we could add that to the motion on November first.
I'll add that to the motion, then it goes into November first.
Yes, please. Yes.
November first.
Thanks. Do you want to second that again?
We have a second for approved, the amended motion.
I believe it, it, I believe it because Diana was the original second. She needs to second the friendly, friendly amendment.
Apologize, I second it.
Thank you, Diana.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for discussion on this topic any further? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone who's opposed, I think I heard everybody or abstaining. Okay, hopefully we will have filled the substitute positions. On the future business, do we have future business?
No.
It's a negative. Okay, so now regular part of our meeting is over. I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for a discussion regarding terms of employment for an unaffiliated employee and also to invite the superintendent.
I'll second. Ben and me.
Chris, anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Uh, was in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I think I heard everyone's voice. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.